Yeah, we're heavy on April birthdays as well.
Yeah.
Sarah.
Get tired of it.
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining the Pasco School Board for our study session this afternoon. We're going to discuss use of district facilities and how that works into our current policies and how we can work as a board and as a district to edit and improve those policies. So we have Ms. Michelle Whitney here.
Thank you. So Sarah and I, my part of tonight's presentation is really just to set the context for what Sarah's about to present to you. And I just wanted to express to you as a board, Sarah and I are really excited about, and maybe even just kind of strangely excited about how awesome this is gonna be. Because one of the things I just think is really, as an organizational leader, watching things start to really come together around the work over the last seven months, and how that initial work of the board governance model, the outrageous outcomes, our budget planning process, how that is really starting to overlap and align with really all of the key functions of the district, for me as an organizational leader, is really exciting. And when we think about and talk about what we started with was with that quadrant graphic was service in the middle and that we were gonna focus on being proactive, efficient, consistent, et cetera, this really aligns with that. And so for me, it's really exciting to see what the work of the last seven months and watch it unfold and really start to fit together in what has been a genuine and authentic way is exciting. And, you know, Sarah and I got kind of moved by the spirit over this policy update process. So what she's gonna show you tonight, and I think what you have experienced in the past, which is a legitimate way to update process, and we will still utilize this, the mechanism that we've used in the past for some purposes, what she's going to show you tonight is a way that we're gonna take that to a deeper level in a way that aligns with your desires as a board and what you've expressed as important to you through your board governance model. And Sarah's got a nice presentation that lays out and connects those dots across the system. I want to thank Sarah for her efforts in really helping me shape and think about this differently in what I think is a very innovative approach that I haven't seen other districts using. So I want to acknowledge Sarah's efforts on that. And really taking a risk and kind of like I bring these strange ideas to the table and say, hey, how can we make this stuff work? And district staff has been just really phenomenal in helping me think outside the box and connecting dots. So with that, I'll let Sarah start to walk us through what this will look like.
I feel like we should high five or something.
Yeah.
All right.
So you guys coordinated your outfits.
All right. So I guess where I'd like to start is with, kind of at the beginning, and reference back to the work that you have done in developing your coherent governance structure and the work that you've done in, through the book, Good Governance is a Choice. When Michelle suggested that we look at the policies with a new approach, initially, my, it's just my nature and my training, I think sometimes my initial reaction is, no, which is not where we, where we want to go with things. But what really helped connect the dots for me was when I read chapter 10 in the Good Governance is a Choice book, which is focused on the systemic application and the alignment of the model to the functions in the district. Because I think for those of us who, who work within the system, not at the, not at the board level, there's, there really is a desire to, to make those connections, to bring the, the work of the board and the policies that you're developing and that you've developed around this governance model, and, and bring that into the organization so that it does drive the work. And so that's, that's really that alignment of, of, you know, what you want those outcomes to be and the work that we're doing every day. That's what this process, we hope, helps achieve in a real, in a real, in a very real way for the, for the staff who are doing it. So it's a, it's something new. It's an experiment. And I, I'll just start off by saying we look forward to your feedback as we're working through this, this process, because it is something, it's, it's a new idea for a way for us to work. But, but as a board, you know, you've engaged in a process where you, you're, you're ensuring that you are the proxy decision makers for the community and that you are, through your work and the policies that you've developed as a board here, that you are capturing the, the values and the priorities of, of the community. And, and that's the real connection piece for, for the work that I do around the policies. The board policies at the governance level need to be reflected and reinforced in the district level policies that we rely on every day, especially for those policies that are connected to or related to the, the major initiatives, the important initiatives that, that we're embarking on this year. So, so that's really what, what this is about. I'm gonna spend a little bit of time just differentiating to make sure that we all understand what it is specifically that we're talking about and kind of the difference between the, the board governance model policies, the district policies, procedures, and, and what the, what that process is, is going to look like. Because the, as you know, the district policies that are in the policy manual are not the same as the, the board policies or the governance model that you've, that you've developed. The, you know, you're, obviously you're familiar with your own, you know, the work that you've done around the governance policies. I know I'm not supposed to step away from the microphone to do this. Where you have worked on governance policies, your CEO relationship policies, your results policies that are, are captured in the, in the outrageous outcomes. These are the ways in which you have created a framework and a structure for, for the overall work of the organization. Underneath that are the district level policies, which are those that are in the policy manual. The 1,000 series, which is related to the board's work, the 2,000. So, so these are the, the district policies where we bring you those policy updates at first reading, occasionally have a discussion more often than not. I'm presenting a recommendation. There aren't really a lot of questions. There's not a lot of public input into that process. And then the policy change is implemented on second reading on the consent agenda. That's, that's typically how our process for policy revision has gone. And then on the, and then related to that, no, I do not want to close all tabs. There we go. On the, and then the procedures related to those district policies are where we talk about the, where we develop those operational details for, for day-to-day guidelines that help us carry out the work. So, so what we're talking about, working on here, is how we can connect the district policies to those board policies. Really codify, if you will, the, the governance model policies that you're developing and that you've developed, and at the same time, refresh the way that we, that we look at the, the overall district policies. Now, this is a, this is a graphic that I borrowed from chapter 10 of Good Governance is a Choice. And I really like it because it, it demonstrates for me kind of who is doing what work at what point in the organization, and, and how the policy direction that comes from the board and that comes from the district policies translates throughout the organization to, to drive the results back to the community. The, the work that you do as a board is around the governance team, where you've developed, up at the top, where you've developed and are developing your, your governance model policies, and you work with the superintendent on doing that. Well, then the, the strategy team would be the superintendent, the administrative team, sometimes the direct supervisors, works on the, the how implementation of, of your policy, of, of the board level policies. That then gets translated into specific procedures for line staff, operational staff, and who, who do the boots-on-the-ground work, and, and that drives the results. So there, there should be connection throughout the organization between all of those levels. And as it's structured right now, we don't have that connection. The, the work is new, and so the goal of this particular process would be to create those connections and, and bring that work all together. This is another way to look at what the, what we're proposing, that the actual policy structure look like. Right now, you as a board have adopted some of your governance policies, the operational expectations, but those at this point are not codified anywhere in the policy manual. One change that we're proposing is that as you develop those policies and approve them as a board, those would actually be incorporated into the district policy manual as a statement of philosophy and, and providing the overall scope of framework for you as a board for the district policies. To, to help remind us and, and create an expectation that the work of the district should be related to those, those broad goals and expectations that, that you've set as a board. In the current district policy manual, this was adopted based on the WASDA model, which came out back in the early 1990s, sometime between 1992 and 1996. And the way that they structured it within that, that manual is every chapter has room for an overall kind of policy or philosophy kind of statement at the beginning of each policy manual, usually in the, in the, you know, the 1,000 or the 2,000 or the 3,000 policy. And that's where we'd propose, where they fit, putting, first of all, putting your, your board policies. And so I will be working with Michelle on how, and then, and, you know, Scott, on how we might do that, so, so that that work is, is incorporated into the overall structure. The district policies then should be aligned with those and consistent with those, and, and that's the rest of the policy manual, and then of course, the, the procedures. And again, that whole structure should be designed to, to, to drive the results back up to, back up to the community. This is just a simple graphic trying to reflect our current revision and adoption process. And like I just described, it's, it's really more of a reactive process. And like Michelle said at the beginning, the plan is not to bring every single policy to you for this deep study and analysis. It would be an overwhelming, we'd never get anything done. It would be an overwhelming, time-consuming task. There are simply some policies that we have to have in place for compliance purposes. It, it just is what it is. And, and our plan, where we need to update those policies, would be to continue to bring those in the, in the same manner. Where we want to make a change, though, is with policies that are connected to the, the broader initiatives of the, of the district and broader initiatives of the board. So the example we're gonna talk about tonight, and the first one we'd like to get out of the gate, is the facilities use policy. And that's connected to the district's initiative around long-term facilities planning and the work of the community builders group. And I'll, and I'll talk about that specifically in just a minute. But that's something where there's a real opportunity for the board to go through a process where you can study the policy in some detail, gather some information, get input from stakeholders, really have some, some robust thinking around what is it that is most important for the community? What is it that should be, what should the district priorities be? How should that be reflected in the policy? And before we get to a, you know, recommended language or final review, there's been a lot of opportunity prior to that for, for input and study and What that would look like, and, and this is, you know, really there's, there's flexibility here, and, and I would be looking for your input on how you, if you think that this will work, if you've got some suggestions for how we might potentially tweak this process. But the idea is that we would bring a proposed topic to you for discussion. And like I said, it would be related to one of the, one of the big initiatives or the, the governance model, related to the board's work. We'd bring you the current policy language, additional information, find out from you what other data and information you would want, and how we would want to gather stakeholder input. We would get that information back to you for further discussion. You'd have an opportunity to determine, do we need more information? And then eventually, that process would result in direction to me and to staff on how we want to, or how you want to modify current policies, what, what are gonna be the, the most important key points to capture? Then we'd bring a draft back for you, get clarification, and eventually have something that reflects your work and, and where you have, where you have consensus over what the, the direction should be. And then we would bring that back to, to the board, regular board meeting for, for adoption. So before I start delving into the facilities policy, any thoughts or questions? Does that make sense? Does it not make sense? Do we like it? Do we hate it?
Oh, I think, I think this is a great idea because, you know, especially when I've gone over and talked to senators and representatives, sometimes they make really stupid decisions with really great intentions. And I think that we are capable of doing, or probably have done the same, made really stupid decisions with great intentions because we don't understand the ramifications of the policies that we are implementing. So I feel it's really important to get that input, not, like you said, not on everything. I mean, you know, there's a policy right now about how many credits kids need to graduate. We're not gonna get input on that. That's not, you know, that's the state's directive. It's not the community's directive. We, we don't get to decide that. But on things that do affect the community, I think that this is a great way, and not just the community, but our teachers and our staff. I think this is a great way to get input and, and so that we better understand what we're doing. So I think this is fantastic. I love this idea. And like I said, not in all policies, but in the ones that, that affect our communities and staff. So I, I'm really excited about this.
I like the wheel, or the, the continuous wheel we have there. I think we're saying we can come in anywhere on that wheel to initiate this process. Sometime it, it might start over at the input. We get input from the community and it starts this process. Or sometime it may come from a director who, who has an idea and we start down at the direction area, or it might come out of a study session, start up at the study, study area. So I think, I like that continuous wheel and we can have continuous improvement until we get to the point where we have a draft that we're ready to bring to first reading.
Yeah. And you really have complete control as a board over, you know, how, how, how this process works. You know, you get as much information as you need or want. And sometimes it might be a lot, and this might take a long time. Sometimes it might not be, and it, and it might be a faster cycle. But there's no, you know, typically a policy that we're gonna bring through this process should not be time-sensitive. You, you really should be able to take the time you need to, 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 to think about it and do the work on it. Okay. So our guinea pig policy is the use of school facilities policy. You do have some things in your folder, and I'm gonna talk, talk you through the, the policy itself in just a minute. But for, for reference, you have the, a copy of the current policy. You've got the WASDA model policy. And then we did pull a couple policies from our neighboring districts, just to give you an idea of, of what some of the variation is that is, that's out there. This policy, and I think I mentioned earlier, we're choosing to focus on because it does relate to the work that we're doing through the community builders group and through the long-term facilities planning consultant. And what came out of some of the preliminary work that that group did and that our consultant heard from various members of the community that, that he talked about was that there, there's, there's, there's been feedback given to, to you as board members and also to, to us as administrators that this is a policy that needs updating, really to better reflect the, both the board's philosophy and direction to, to help better meet the community needs around facilities that really are, you know, they're taxpayer-funded community assets. And so we, it would be helpful for the community to, for the district to, to revisit this policy and make sure that it, that it reflects the interests and priorities that are appropriate as determined by the board. So, so this will be a great opportunity for us to try out the, to try out the wheel, if you will, and, and, and see how it goes. This is also a policy, although the procedures have been updated over time, and that's the detail of how that policy is applied. The actual policy language itself has not been updated since, I'd say, 1996. So it's been, it, it's been a, a very long time. It, it was at the time based on WASDA model policy language. And, you know, whether or not there was work done to make it more specific to the needs of our community, I don't know. But, but it, it was part of that adoption of, of the WASDA policies back in the day. Some of the reasons that we've heard to bring this forward were identified both by the consultant and through the community builders group. Different members of the community, and, and when I say community, I don't just mean our patrons and our community groups. I mean our staff as well. The, the, the facilities policy really touches a very, very broad spectrum of, of people. We have our extracurricular activities, our athletic activities, all have to be able to use our school facilities. And then we also have outside, various outside groups, lots of outside groups, who want to be able to use our school facilities as well. And, and what we're hearing from all of those groups is that they're requesting some clarification around priorities. What are the district's priorities for use of school or district facilities? Some people feel that the administration of the different fees has been inconsistent, or that it's not clear necessarily from the language who should be charged, what fee for what purpose. There may be consistency between different facilities, or inconsistency between different facilities as far as who's allowed to use what, when. And that's been a concern for some people, that there have been, there, there are some restraints on the district to be able to support different community activities. And then it's generally just not efficient. You know, we've also heard concerns from our buildings and administrators that, you know, sometimes not everyone who uses the district facilities is, is, what's the word I'm looking for, conscientious about taking care of the space. And there have been incidents where, you know, there's been damage, or, or it becomes very problematic for the district to be able to clean up after different users, things like that. So a variety of reasons kind of across the spectrum why we heard, what we heard from the community to, to bring this particular policy forward.
I'd like to add one there, just, because I think several board members may have heard this from other, from multiple patrons, just so they know that we're talking about it, that some patrons follow what they think is the process, and then they don't, they're not even clear if they have access to that. And they may be, they may show up and get kicked out by staff. They may show up and get kicked out by another user who also thinks that they have used it. So just clarifying that portion of it, too, I think is something we've heard of.
Yeah. All right. Saying a certain piece. The, um, the first part, I think, of the study of the existing policy will be focusing on that, what the current language says about the, the district philosophy. And you're gonna hear me as we go through this process, and in the future, you're gonna hear me refer a lot to kind of the philosophy and the broader term. Because what, I'm gonna click back here for a second. What we're doing in this work is, is looking at the, really the box in the middle. What are the, the general principles that the board wants to take from, from the community, from your constituents, and apply in this policy? What are the general standards of conduct that you want to be included in the policy? The purpose is not to talk about operational details or get into the nitty-gritty of how that policy is administered. It's really to be setting the, the general expectations around what the board's expectation and philosophy is for staff to be able to administer the policy. So if you look in your folder, there is a document with yellow highlights. And that is the existing policy. And I put those highlights around some of the, the language statements in there that I thought were examples of what I mean by what the philosophy is, what the kind of the overarching goal of the policy is. So, so you'll see statements where the board is encouraging public use of the facilities, where the board considers the facility to be part of, of the community. Those are some of those overarching statements, that the outside use of district facilities shouldn't interfere with district use of facilities. That's, that's a kind of a standard of conduct or an expectation around what that might look like. You also see some language around different types, how, how the, the, the groups have been divided into three different tiers, if you will, group one, group two, and group three. And really what that language serves to do is it differentiates and prioritizes who is charged and who is not charged for use of district facilities. So again, that is a statement of philosophy from the board who has made a value judgment that community betterment groups, groups who are working in the interest of children or, or activities for children are charged the least amount all the way down to the other end of the spectrum where commercial groups are charged the highest fee. And really the, the preference is that commercial groups not utilize the district facilities or rent the district facilities. Those aren't necessarily all of the, the, the philosophy statements in that policy. It's a pretty short, actually a pretty short policy, but just to illustrate for you what I'm talking about when, when I'm using that language. Now, this is not intended to drive the outcome at all of this process. What I, what I would like to do, though, here is just talk about what, to, to give you kind of a complete picture of where this might go, what some of the potential outcomes are, would be, or how you might see this in the language. So based on the, the input or the concerns that we're getting. So if there is a policy statement, for example, that says this is part of the district facilities or part of the community, maybe the board feels like that's something that needs to be beefed up, that, that the district needs to make a strong be beefed up, that the district needs to make a stronger statement about what the district facilities or school facilities are, that these are quote unquote "community resources" or assets. Or the board may decide, no, that captures it, we're good, we don't need to change the language. So words around encouraging public use, you might decide to leave those where they are, you might decide to make changes there. One item that you probably won't make a lot of changes on is the issue around interference with district use, that the facilities need to be first available for district purposes and district use. You'll see that pretty consistency in other policies. If you're getting feedback from the community that there needs to be clarification, one option might be to simplify classifications of users. And so what we'd see at the result of the wheel is a process where you would be able to provide, after you get the input, have discussion, reach some consensus on what the priorities are for the board, we would then align that with where we may need to make changes in the language and bring that back to you as a draft. And then you would have an opportunity to say, yeah, that captures it, no, that doesn't capture it, we need to put more emphasis here, we need to take this out, et cetera. And then we would, you know, again, take another stab at a draft and bring that back to you. The, like I said at the beginning, the purpose of this is to try to align the work that you've done with the policy work and bring that into the organization in a real meaningful way. Bring the community voice into those policies, especially those that are impacted by the big initiatives. You know, Amy, you mentioned the graduation policy and you're absolutely, I think that example is a great example, a great point, because tonight we're going to do first reading on the state graduation requirements, which we have no control over. We have to make that change to the policy. What we're not bringing to you is any of the other language that is contained in that policy, but that very well could come forward after either the legislature is done with whatever they're doing over in Olympia or after the Career and College Ready Group gets done with the work that they're doing around the high school program. That might be a perfect opportunity then. And I'm sure that they're going to have some input as to what they would like to see changed in the policy. So that's a great example where we're going to bring that graduation policy tonight and, you know, that's, it is what it is. There are a couple non-purposes for this work. The purpose of this work is not to politicize the district's policy process. Yes, we very much want to reflect the, what the priorities are for the community, but this is not in any way intended to upend certain, you know, legal protections or things that we have in place that are required by law that are captured in policy. Because again, that, those are legal requirements and that's what we have to do as a government organization. It's all, another non-purpose is, again, to get into those nitty gritty administrative details. We want to continually try to focus on keeping, on keeping our focus at a high level. Any questions up to this point? So here we are. That's what we'd like to do. And hopefully that is a process that's going to meet your needs. As we move forward with the facilities policy, I'm curious to hear what, as you're thinking about this issue and what you personally as a board member have heard, what other information and data do you want to have as we go through this?
You know, I'm a little concerned about getting the people who have interest in this policy here. I mean, I think it's critical to get principals here. I think it's critical that we get, that we get the people who are trying to use maybe, you know, some of the community organizations here to know what they would, you know, what they want and what they need as well as, you know, parents. And anyway, basically the community that's going to use the facilities outside of school hours and we need to know how it's going to impact the schools. So I think that's the hard part, is getting the people here that can give us a good idea of what they need so that we can build policies around that.
We do have access to the contact information for individuals and groups who've used our facilities in the past. So I think one of the simplest things would be to send a communication, whether it's an email or a letter, out to those individuals, make contact with them and let them know that this is a subject that the board is going to be working on. And reach out to them to make sure that they're, if they're interested in it, that they can be engaged. And that would include district, like the building administrators, the ADs.
Maybe the custodians, because they might be really impacted by this.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good one.
Do we, do we have a current definition for, I saw up there, community partners? Like I would assume that it includes like the city, we're sharing, you know, we're sharing play fields and stuff like that. I would assume it includes city parks and rec, but is there a list where we have defined community partners anywhere?
There isn't a formal list of quote unquote "community partners." We have a variety of different kinds of agreements that involve use of facilities. So the city and Parks and Rec is one, both with the schools that share property with a park, like Maya Angelou or McGee. They, we have a number of sites where we work with the city to mutually use that space. And then we also have an agreement with Parks and Rec around priority for being able to use district facilities. Boys and Girls Club is another organization that uses our facilities for before and after school care programs and summer programs. So generally speaking, Scott, when we're talking about community partners, it is organizations that we have some kind of formalized relationship with. Tri-Cities Community Health, for example, you know, they've got the clinic on the Ochoa site would be another. But we don't have a, you know, specific definition.
Do we get very much of the commercial that comes in and has classes and whatever? Do we get that last category that's on here very much in our facilities?
I don't know.
Commercial enterprises.
I mean, a lot of these questions I think you're going to have, I'm not going to know the answer to, and that's part of the information that we can bring back with, to you when we go further down the road.
So thank you for the presentation. Just a couple thoughts. I haven't reviewed all the material that we just received here, but as you mentioned, I think this is timely. We've talked a lot about increasing our early learning opportunities and kind of struggled as other areas in our state and country to kind of, how do we address that? Expanding E-CAP was an option or preschool opportunities, but those tend to meet during the day, which is when our obviously K-12 students meet. So that's a challenge for any area that facilities are tight, which is many areas. So it seems like a great solution to use those facilities, obviously in the afternoons or evenings when school's not in session. We have early release days or school even just in general gets out before five or six. So it doesn't necessarily have to be an add-on late evening weekend, but these are times when people are still at the school and it should be easy to accommodate. So I'm excited about the opportunity to expand the parent education resources that we provide. I know that's very successful and I've visited some of their facilities and there's always a waiting list. I know I said that many times. So we just, if we can open up more of the facilities for that, and obviously we've talked about the ready for kindergarten and this is a perfect opportunity where we just have facilities that we can use at times when our K-12 students are not in school. And there's plenty of times to do that. Another kind of general idea or principle that I think this will apply to most of these policies and not just this one is something you mentioned about kind of the consistency and communication or understanding of the policy. Like, okay, I have no idea how, like, let's say I have a scout group and I want to use the school near where I live. I mean, I have no idea who do I contact, how is the process, what would the cost be? And I think the challenge that we have with this and in lots of other areas is consistent input, because this is a frustration we often hear from school to school and from the district, what is the procedure or protocol? And does the person that's the receptionist know and say the right thing? Do they get sent to the right person? And this is kind of a big picture. I think that's something that we can improve that's been a struggle in the last couple years, as it is with any large organization. So that's the other principle I think that will be exciting to kind of help in lots of areas. And then the last thing as far as facilities, I think this is helpful, is we have struggles in our community, but not just our community, with the health of children, struggles with activity levels and exercise and things like that. So the, I've wondered myself, like, what are our facilities open for use of the playground space? What are the times or rules? And a good comparison would be like, say, McGee to Franklin and schools where the site is set up differently. Some schools are somewhat blocked off, Franklin may be locked, whereas McGee's an older school and it's very easy to access. You know, I don't know our liabilities there, but McGee, I know people tend to just go and use that space and we did as well. And it's different at some or other schools. So what are kind of the procedures and policies and do our, does our community know that? I don't even know what is, what's available. So tying some of those things together, I think will be helpful and appreciated by the community and maybe will provide lots of benefit to our community.
I think I discussed this with Michelle just the other day and it ties in here too, but even just the community knowing expectations on when their school building is open. You know, some schools might, the first bell rings at nine o'clock for an elementary school, let's say. Some parents can go show up at 8:30 and go talk to their teachers, take care of business there if they need to. Other schools, you might show up at 8:50 or 8:55 and the school's still locked. Just even tying that in, not for extracurricular things or extra groups, but just expectations of the facilities consistent across the board, I think is another positive thing that could come out of this.
That could be listed on the website with school hours. And I think it is in some of our schools.
Well, in that particular concern, Carla Lobos is meeting with the principals, I believe that, I think she may have already met with them. The principals were also asking for, from clarity and expectation. So I expect to have that even outside of, yes, yeah, yeah. That loop is getting closed as we speak.
Are they having problems with like people dropping off their kids a half an hour before school?
I don't know that. I just know that there was a request for.
Principals like, yes.
I just know that there was a request for some consistency and guidance around if I'm a school whose start time is X, you know, when does the door open, et cetera, so that, and the principals were asking for that. We want to be clear and consistent across the district and so they're working on that.
And it needs to be, it really does need to be readily available, you know, right on the websites of those schools and.
Yeah. Once it's decided, we'll do a media campaign and get it published and so that people are clear.
Yeah, that's a great point. I know that's been it for my kids because they love like the recess before school and I'm like, is that a thing? Like, I don't know, when does Miss Holberg want these kids out of the school? I mean, they probably don't appreciate that, but I don't even know. I mean, I, you know, are they, and then some kids have breakfast in the school and so I don't, I mean, I'm sure our principals have much better graphs than we do, but I don't know, you know, when is it preferred or allowed for the kids to be there playing outside? Because they love that time, they want to leave early so that they can get to school and see friends before school starts. But having the consistency across the district, like you mentioned, I'm sure the principals appreciate it too.
And school starts so late in our elementary schools and that's, yeah, that's tough.
Another, so a couple of next steps for this particular process. What we'd like to do next is at the next meeting in which we talk about this policy, that's the meeting where we'd like for you to have an opportunity to get input from stakeholders. And I think we would do that in a couple different ways. Michelle and I talked today about developing a survey that could be widely available and making those results, survey results available to you. And then also making sure that we publicize and that opportunity to give the board input and also, like I said, make contact with people who've utilized the facilities before to make sure that, or who have an interest, I should say, not just people who've used the facilities before, anyone, including district staff and administrators who have an interest in making sure that this is a, is a good process and that these, you know, these are public assets and I think everyone wants, recognizes that and really wants them to be put to the best use possible. So reaching out to anyone who's got an interest in that, letting them know that they can come provide input to the board would be the next steps. Other than that, any other input or thoughts on the proposed process? We are kind of building the plane as we're flying it with this one and so we may just need to tweak how it's working as we're doing it. But I'm hopeful and I'm looking forward to it, so.
When would be an approximate timeline that would give district staff enough time to get ready for this next meeting, but also make contacts with interested parties to come in and have this first session?
Yeah. That's a great question. And without having, so we've got to be mindful of having enough time to be able to do that, but also of what the board calendar is with what you have coming up. And Scott, I just don't have that in front of me.
So we can clarify at agenda setting. So we have some options and study sessions coming up. And I just need to know from you in terms of moving things around priorities, but we can make it a priority for me.
All right. We'll work on that with the schedule and look forward to hearing more from you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Thank you, Ms. Thornton. Any other questions from the board? All right. We'll adjourn the study session for this afternoon and we look forward to seeing those who remain at our regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30.